Recording on. Go ahead and call this, uh, board meeting of the Green County Board of Supervisors to order and, it's beginning to feel like Christmas, maybe not in here, but outside it is. And we appreciate you all being here and we, the board wishes everyone a Merry Christmas and we appreciate all that the employees who, uh, this time of year and all year to keep the county running well. And with that, I've asked Supervisor Ron Campbell to lead us in the.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Campbell. We'll now go to agenda item one B called to the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the, board and call to the public? Daniel?
Welcome back Dad.
Well, thank you.
I haven't seen you in a little while.
Thank you. Before I had been involved, because I'm going to explain to you what happened to me this morning. Uh, good morning gentlemen. My name is Daniel Cervantes, Clifton resident, Greenie County resident. I just recently purchased a narrow beam flashlight. It really is a super narrow flashlight. As I was walking over here to attend this meeting from my residence near the Clifton post office, I was still having trouble with the flashlight as I was nearing the Little Frisco River Cafe. I decided to cross the street and was narrowly run over by a Morenci school bus. It was still, it was still dark. So I'm very fortunate to be speaking to you. I may be jumping ahead, um, to agenda item seven, but I'm hoping that you three gentlemen will decide to retain your current positions. That is, uh, Richard Lunt Chairman, David Gomez Vice Chairman, Ron Campbell Member. And just to share with you, I still believe in Santa Claus, okay? Thank you gentlemen.
Are you sure it wasn't a Dunkin' bus?
It could have been a Dunkin'. Yeah, it really could have been a Dunkin' store.
That's the evidence.
All right. If it had been a Dunkin' bus, it had got him. Okay, thank you Daniel. Does anyone else like to address the board and call the public? Seeing none, we'll go to agenda item two. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board Director of the Green County Public Health Service District, and we'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of these items. A consent agenda.
So moving, we approve the consent agenda's posted.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll go to two B and Public Works Fleet Facility Managers on an ambulance.
Good morning, Tony Hines Fleet Manager. This is just an update on our ambulance purchase. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we started a purchase of an ambulance. Uh, and then twenty-two, twenty-three, it hit the budget, which was approved. Um, we've had problems acquiring that ambulance due to manufacturers supplying the chassis for us. Um, I got a notice a couple of weeks ago that we did have a chassis. Uh, GM has moved their chassis up to twenty-twenty-fives. So we'll have a twenty-twenty-five chassis. Along with that came a price increase of eight thousand one hundred and eight dollars. And that's what we're asking for today to cover that charge.
Chairman, if I might briefly.
Yes, please.
You'll have assistance under the Public Health Services. We will pay for it out of Public Health Services funds. But, um, we've had a devil of a time getting first responder vehicles, period, but ambulances are the hardest of all of them. Um, I was in contact with Rick Miller from Health yesterday. Uh, they're wanting to know when, when they're going to get ended. So we're worried about the age and so forth of our current fleet. Fleet does a great job of keeping them up and going, but they, they acquire a lot of miles. And so even with the price increase, our recommendation to the board be to, uh, approve green light, the purchase, through the Sourcewell contract and, and tell them today, please start building our ambulance right away.
I have a question.
Yes.
On this quote, is, is this, uh, ambulance coming out of Arizona or is it coming out of?
California.
California?
Yeah.
So when it comes into Arizona, do they, they truck it over here or do they, do, do they drive it over here?
I go get it.
You go get it?
Yeah. I went and got the last one.
So, so.
But it does say delivered on there.
Yeah, the delivery fee of fifteen hundred bucks?
Yeah, we can get that off if I go get it.
Take it off. Okay. Alright.
Which were fifteen thousand.
Seems like everybody's delivering for free, you know? Hundred bucks, I thought.
It's either way.
We didn't check on Amazon for an ambulance.
I thought it was coming from New York.
They should have.
And I guess it says not to exceed, uh, two hundred and forty thousand.
That was the old quote.
That was the old quote.
Eight thousand. Okay.
So I'll make the motion to not exceed two fifty.
Go for it.
Alright, well, uh, I move that we approve of the action regarding the purchase of one ambulance through the leader emergency vehicles using the Sourcewell contract in the amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And I second that motion. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, the Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Green County Flood Control District, and we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of these items. A consent agenda.
So moving, we approve the consent agenda's posting.
I'll second that.
And motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the Board of Supervisors. We will go to agenda item four. Hayden LaFloy, and I don't see her. I guess you're going to run that, uh, or three, read.
Morning gentlemen. Uh, Hayden's out on a well-deserved break, so I'm going to address this agenda item. Uh, this is a requested contract with upfront planning and entitlement. Um, this firm is going to assist us, Greenie County, specifically Hayden, Gene, myself, and our county attorney with updating our, uh, planning and zoning ordinance. Our ordinance is, is quite old, quite dated. It has some perks to it that causes a lot of headaches and, uh, and quite a bit of extra work. And, uh, we, we want to do a comprehensive rebuild of that ordinance, simplify it a little bit. Was modeled after way back in the day Maricopa, which really probably wasn't an appropriate starting place for Green's ordinance. Uh, so this is something that we've been talking about, uh, since I came on board and probably even before that. But we've had enough conversations with this particular firm and with Austin and Garrett that we're to the point where we would like to engage with them and move forward.
Are you have questions?
No.
I, uh, in, in looking this over and, and I certainly understand why you're doing it and I just have, and I tried to call Hayden yesterday to get some answers, but, uh, they will customize it to fit what we want in Greenie County. Now, this isn't going to be a, a template and, and going to have things in here that prob- might not even, uh, happen in Greenie County. Is that true?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And and I see that it'll take about, this will be presented in about a ye- end of next year, correct?
Yeah, we, as I often say, from, uh, my kids' favorite movie, The Princess Bride, when you rush Miracle Max, you get bad miracles. We want to do this right.
I would personally just ask you a question. Do you give update to the board every once in a while how things are progressing and, and, uh,
Will do.
Keep us up to date on that because, uh, zoning is like roads and gets you in trouble real quick.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll give those same updates also to your TMZ Commission.
Well, that, if not a, a motion to be in order, gentlemen.
Okay. Well, I saw move that we approve the request to contract with upfront planning and entitlement LLC for professional services to assist in updating Greenie County zoning ordinances as presented.
Do we want to put a note, not exceed about?
Well, I was going to ask the question that it has thirty-four dollars here and then it has thirty-seven total on the allocations on there, the fund allocation, but I, as presented, uh,
So that, gentlemen, that just gives us a little bit of a cushion. Um, and with these types of contracts, it's almost certain that, that we'll need that cushion.
Well, I can add, uh, not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars, correct?
I'll second that. Okay, we have motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And thank you very much. And thank Hayden for her work on this endeavor because it's, it's needed.
Thank, thank you gentlemen. This is a long time coming.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to agenda item five, uh, and.
I suppose I can take the lead if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
We, uh, this, next year's calendar is going to be unorthodox. You'll see that our, our normal pattern is Tues- you know, first and third Tuesdays, we have as many meetings that are not on the first and third Tuesdays we have on the first and third Tuesday. You should have in your packet two copies of the calendar. One has notes that explain why we moved some of the dates that we did. Um, and then the second one is what, what I would term a clean copy that has simply the dates there and then the, the notations about adopting budgets that we usually do. Um, given the fact that there's still some uncertainty about when the primary election will be, um, there, there's talk again about having a special session in January to do several possible, uh, adjustments to the election calendar, one of which is to move the primary calendar. So some of those dates in July and August may move again. Um, it's, it's, um, and it would be extremely difficult to hold a meeting on the same day as an election, of course. Um, so we've adjusted, uh, the times. You'll see in October, November, for example, we've, we've moved all the dates down essentially a week. That avoids WIR conflict, it avoids elections conflict. It allows us to canvass the election timely. And so, uh, rather than a, a first and third, you'll see that it's, most of those are in on a second and fourth type of rotation. The calendar naturally gives us two or three, three-week gaps in the, in the calendar. And what we did essentially shift those. So we still have, uh, roughly a two-week gap between meetings. Um, like I said, a lot of moving parts, but we believe this calendar will work. Um, as always during the budget session or season, we may ask for some, uh, additional meetings and we will let you know early as we can when we need those to, to give, uh, the staff direction. But we believe that calendar will work. Bianca and I spent two or three hours on it, um, trying to make sure we cross-reference spring breaks and Christmas breaks and, uh, everything else. So we hope we've got it all.
I'm going to throw curves in and right out of the bat. Uh, on January seventeenth, that Wednesday, uh, that's, I have a whip board meeting and it's very important to this county and state. And then on February twenty-first, also the same thing. What was that?
February twenty-first?
Twenty-first. And let me see. Uh, it's ahead.
Can we move those to Thursday?
That's, we can move to Thursday or, and the one in January, we could drop down a week if you, if you'd like as well.
That, that would be on Tuesday. Yeah, whatever works for you guys. Let me see.
Chairman, do you have no idea how?
I, I, I know that.
Giving a hard time.
I tried to get ahold of.
We were aware of the, 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 uh, whiff of board meetings with sometimes conflict and we missed those too. So, um, Thursday of either the, those weeks would work. Or we could drop the January one down a week. It's the board's preference.
You know what? It's all about Richard right now.
Yeah. Oh gee, buddy. You bet. It's about time. Let's go for Thursday.
Same week, just drop it back one day.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Then, then if I might suggest that, uh, in the motion that you adopt the calendar is presented except that the January seventeenth meeting was moved to the eighteenth and February tw- twenty-first to the twenty-second.
Uh, oh, more. I have CSA on the twenty-second of February. Oh. I'm throwing curveballs right and left.
That's a short.
Um, we could do it. It, it's, it's a little bit more difficult, but we could do it Tuesday, move it forward to the twentieth. That's right after a holiday that Jimmy presents some concerns, but, but we can do it. We can do it.
The Tuesday, the twentieth of February?
Okay.
Work for you, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, just CSA is on.
Yeah.
Right.
And that time of year, those meetings tend to be.
Sorry, I know there's so many balls in the air, but.
It's, it's a lot of calendars coordinated, so.
Let's bring the school in here.
We, we tried to look at some of those. We don't, we don't cover for every ball game, but we, we tried to match breaks.
Okay, is there any other, uh, concern on the calendar?
Not that we know of right now.
Yeah, if they do, we'll change. That's what we've always done.
Right.
So if not, um, a motion to.
Well, I'll move that we approve of the Greenie County Board of Supervisors twenty-twenty-four tentative meeting dates, times and posting locations pursuant to Arizona revised statute eleven dash two one four, with the exception of January seventeenth being moved to January eighteenth and February twenty-first being moved to February twentieth.
I second that motion.
Yeah, we have motion is second and Bianca, you'll get us a calendar with these corrections, please.
We will also get it from the website.
Okay, and, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very, very much. We will now, uh, go to agenda item six. Mr. Adams.
Alrighty, thank you. So we had this on our last meeting. This was the order for voter precincts. Uh, we went over that. Um, luckily Sherry and her staff, we had Aaron and Dusty that looked over those, um, and found some of the, some issues we had on what we referenced for our old precincts. Um, I went off a sheet that we had within the office, um, but when we compared it against Avid, it didn't match up. So this technical change doesn't change anything to do with the maps far as what we adopted on the end. It just changed what they were referenced to on that order. Um, so this new order, you'll see some different references. Um, but the maps, they're still the same. Um, that end piece is still the same to which, uh, precincts are adopted. So we just want to make that correction because that matches what we used in the last election.
Is there any question?
Just Sherry, is it right now? Alright.
Okay. If not, a motion be in order?
I saw move that we, uh, approve. You consider the technical corrections for, of eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty-three voter precinct order as presented?
I'll second that.
There are motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Once again, thank you. That just shows that, you know, uh, we have a family here and, and we help each other out and, and Sherry, thank you and your staff and all those involved because we want this right.
Teamwork. That's what it is.
So with that, all, although in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll now go to agenda item seven.
These are our, uh, typical annual, uh, appointments to various assignments on the board. Uh, these are the same ones that we had last year. I believe they were that, that way the year before as well. Um, if the board wishes to adopt and, and assign yourselves to these same, uh, assignments, you could use on a single motion. Uh, if you want to change, I know that there are some of our sister counties where the chairman of the board, for example, changes every year or every nine months.
Seventeen months.
Seventeen months, however it works among the three or the five, uh, but, uh, others are more, uh, stable. And so it, it is certainly the board's preference. These are your assignments to yourself to set up various committees.
Are you still willing to serve as chairman?
I, I would ask if any of you would, though, like the honor. I'll serve, but. I'm honorable, alright.
Well, those good.
How about, uh, how about the others? Anybody else? I, I, I'm.
I'll stay with you.
Ron?
Yeah, the wolf.
Yep. And Eco, I'm perfectly willing to stay there and LPC, is anybody like that? Fridays, nine o'clock meetings.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Well, I move that we, uh, uh, approve the, regarding the appointments of chairman, appointment of board members to various boards committees and assignments, assignments as listed.
Second that motion.
Have motion in there. Second, all those in favor of the motion, please. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And thank you gentlemen for your willingness to serve. We appreciate.
For your willingness.
Next, we'll go to agenda item eight. Mr. High.
Morning, Tony Hines Fleet Manager. Um, we're looking to purchase a water truck. The water truck that we have right now, a four thousand gallon water truck is a two thousand twelve. We've had major, major mechanical issues with that. We've done three turbos in ten years and an end frame rebuild. Um, so we're not willing to put more money into this one. So we have a thing on this last budget where we budgeted for a, uh, a screen for the road department. Uh, we had three hundred and some thousand dollars on that. So instead of buying that particular one, we're going to cut it down into half for this water truck and half for a smaller screen. Um, so this water truck I've found at, um, Empire, it could have been, uh, almost as bad as getting an ambulance, but, uh, we found one that's there. They don't have it on site, but they have it coming in and we have our name on it, so it will be ours when it comes in. Hopefully by the end of this year, next month at the latest.
Is it a used one?
No, it's a brand new one.
And on the turbo, you said you burned up three of them?
We, we.
Why do you feel like the car, was it because it was, the motor was undersized or?
No, we, we've had it to three different, um, shops, uh, Freightliner, International, an independent guy. Each one of them have put their own turbos on. This last turbo we did, we've put on ourselves. We got it from a company in Phoenix that strictly does turbos. And all we get on the answer on these is that particular engine sometimes throws turbos.
Okay.
Hard to lock it down that way.
And it is, but, you know, okay.
And they're giving us thirty-five thousand for that, for a trade-in, no?
Yep, and they're well aware of the issue also. We're not hiding anything from them.
Great. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, uh, motion would be in order?
I saw move that we approve the purchase of one water truck from Empire Truck in trailer using the O M N I A contract not to exceed one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
Have motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll go to the, the eight B.
A B is the, uh, expansion to the D building on the, and the dance floor at the fairgrounds. Um, this few slides here on what we've already done on the fairgrounds. This is the north kitchen and the I building. And a little further down, it all looks the same. We've had the fence around the electrical panels to make it look the same. This is the south kitchen. This was taken last Wednesday. Um, I believe they already have the outside stain. The inside is already drywall textured and they'll be painting it tomorrow. Tomorrow, also the AC guy will show up to put the head in. And after that, it should be just a little, few little touch-up things and we'll be done.
And Tony, thank you and your crew, uh, at the fair, that, uh, north kitchen. I got a lot of compliments, the people that were using that, the modifications that you've made, uh, the new equipment, the floor, the size.
I love the floor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might brag on Tony's crew a little bit, five weeks ago, I think it was, they tore the old structure down, took out the cement. There was nothing there and it needed to be torn down. It, it was in bad shape. Um, so what you see looks like maybe it was just touch up what was there. It was stripped down clear to the, to the foundation and the cement was, the concrete was repoured on the floor. So I, they, they've been moving along at a quick pace and, and it shows. It's worked well done.
Have you ever been in that south kitchen before? You know, the door was on this side?
Yeah.
And the water from the restroom kind of just like dips down like that. So we built the cement up and we moved the door back to the backside. Um, there will be awnings over these front windows, except for under the grandstand, but on the two kitchens, there'll be awnings over the front and the side windows.
And, and that's the same size. We didn't enlarge that at all.
Same size. We didn't want to go closer to the bathroom because that's.
That's one problem is.
Yeah. So inside the north kitchen, there's, or, or countertops, we cut so they can get closer to the windows. For the north kitchen.
Lots of compliments.
Yeah, we added an oven into that kitchen. The other cooktop is the same, just new. This is the I building that we did a new floor in and opened it all up. There's plenty of room in there for meeting, stuff like that. That's the fair office. Has a restroom in it and over here on the side, I didn't get a picture of it, but there's a separate counting room. Keep all the money in the safe and stuff.
Where the, the office, you moved it from the original or you just redid the office there at the, uh?
We just added the office into the I building. The main office for the fairgrounds is still over by the B building.
Thank you. I.
They needed space to, to count money, but they also needed space to be able to do things outside of the business of the fair or other, other events.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is the drywall and the south kitchen. Like I say, this was last Wednesday, so by now it's already textured and ready for paint. This is the add-on that we're looking to do for the D building. Um, it's roughly a fifty by seventy. It's just going to be the outside. It'll match the other part of the building. And that's one that we have a bid on that's been very difficult to get people to come out and do bids on this. Uh, so we only have the one bid from Brothers out of Safford. And, uh, it's for a hundred and.
Twenty-four thousand one hundred.
For both areas. Yeah. Sixty-nine thousand three hundred for the D building.
Yes.
And then the dance floor here would be a fifty by fifty. Um, carrying that whole structure down and doing a new one there will be another fifty four thousand eight hundred. And if uh notice on here, if we do both of them together through the Ward Brothers, they'll deduct six thousand.
Just wait, and what's gonna happen to the pits? I know there's some the the big barbecue pits or?
Not affected.
Not not affected?
No.
Okay.
No, yeah, they're they're over there on the side of the bar. The bar won't be affected. It's just the dance floor. Where we have different pitches on there. It's a very old structure and it's starting to blow away in the wind. So this will be a new uh red iron structure that should be secure.
And eventually will you do something with with the the uh bar building or?
Yeah, the bars should be updated in the next couple of years. The uh uh the structure on the north side there, the yeah, that's uh the stage will redo the stage, make it a permanent thing. Um, probably underneath the the grandstand or the dance floor.
Once again, thank you. This has been a long time coming and and thank you. I think it'll be a great addition uh to our county for the to upgrade these.
So the ARPA fund, you know. Um, you know.
Well spent.
Yeah, well spent providing that infrastructure that we want.
On that side of it, um, we originally had budgeted, I think it was sixty thousand for
Forty.
For for both structures.
Now each.
Each forty each, so eighty thousand. So this is this is above bid. Um, we do have some flexibility in our ARPA funds. We we built some flexibility in and then there's some projects that have the the whole structure underneath the grandstand has come in uh somewhat under budget. So we do have the money to do it, but I I didn't want you to to not do or do this without realizing that this is a little higher than we had originally planned a year and a half, almost two years ago now. Um, I I want to commend Tony for beating the bushes. Uh, we talked at least three or four different times about where else we go try to find contractors. And and summary demonstrates that, but but uh he's called just about anybody who works in metal and and it's it's not unlike trying to get other contracts out here that there's only one company interested. So in this regard, it would be a sole source um under our purchasing contract because nobody else will return our calls.
Hey, if there's no other discussion or a motion would be in order.
I move to be approved of the uh add on to the D building and replace the dance floor roof at the fairgrounds using Ward Brothers Enterprise LLC in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars and has presented.
Second that move. Here we have motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, Tony, also, I want to thank you for the narrative explaining why there was only one bid. That was very helpful. Uh, thank you. I know it took a little extra time, but but it was sure made the analyzing this a lot better. So thank you for that narrative. And with that, uh, no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So ordered. We will now go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. We now go to agenda item nine. Swanson, how you doing today?
Oh, good. Morning, I'm Jean Swanson. I am part time with engineering. And I'm shorter than anybody else. Um, come to talk to you a little bit about the Franklin Duncan watershed study that you've had updates on along the way. Um, the first public meeting that we had to do with that was one that has stuck with me all this time. And that was apparently in the early nineteen hundreds, there was a barnstorming. Uh, in the barnstorming days, a barnstormer flew under the bridge at Duncan. And I heard not only did he fly under that bridge, he actually flew under the bridge that's buried under that bridge. From that kind of was born alternative number sixteen in the whole watershed study area, which was to keep the sediment home. That was actually named by the state N R C S engineer. And the first portion of that was to build some numerous rock dams along there uh on some of that watershed area. Um, and I did do believe I sent you all a video. This is quite some time ago. U S G S done the monitoring and the Shira Kaws of how some of these these things have been done. However, it was thrown off the list of all the alternative alternatives because it was deemed to be too complicated and too expensive. So instead decided to pursue it because it's dear to my heart for free. And with that, I am in the have been working on applying to AmeriCorps to get volunteers to come do this. And Austin is gonna show you a video, a little bit about what AmeriCorps does. And it's AmeriCorps N triple C which stands for Community Corps. Civilian Community Corps.
Thought you were going back to the Conservation Corps. During World War Two.
Yes, they're they uh they're they're kind of built on some of the same idea.
Yeah, we'll have Gene simply give the narrative as we go along.
Yeah.
It's gonna go feedback over the poll.
Mm hmm.
Coming in. You know why it's not playing audio, but I can do it. We'll just have a weird little bump over there.
And maybe the pictures are good enough. I was the only one that had technological issues. Like I'm the I T customer. I was telling you, we don't live in the twenty first century in our house. Okay, so I said it it. I said it is it is free to the county. Uh, they do require that we we provide housing and all the ways we came up for that to be free is I delayed it a bit. And we're gonna keep them at our place. So when our guest ranch season is done, we'll make that work with cots and and extra things. And I've been speaking to the uh Nicole Cozy that will be should be fine because they have a full kitchen. Okay, we don't have enough laundry facilities, so we don't have enough water for all of them, as long as they're within driving distance of a laundromat. So, and we are. So that's how we're going to gonna make that work. And there will be no cost to the county. Like I said, it's free. You know, it's still its federal dollars, not to be discounted. But on the other hand, the um the free to the county for the original study was was five hundred thousand dollars. And with that, we came up with no particular on the ground things that could be done. So I think this is probably a a better alternative that way around. The other cost will be my time. I will be that site supervisor for twenty hours per week. Reed has said that will be okay. Only gonna do it for three or four weeks, not the full chunk of time. We're bookending it. So we can do this as a dry run and perhaps try it in future years to do more. We're gonna work on just state land to begin with. Because all the state land requires is the GPS, the rock dams. And uh with that, I want to say some for concerns about future archaeology that would come in from a little bit of work with the Forest Service. It doesn't kick in until it's sixty years old. So so I think none of us here will have to worry about that very much. Um, and with that, I do have the the deadline is this Friday to attend in the concept form. I have presented them already, rough draft for their uh impressions. They said it looks good. Um, but we do in this concept form, then if that's approved, I'm ninety nine percent sure it will be, then we'll be invited to apply. So there's one more step to go after that to make it official, which I'll bring to you at that point too, at that point too. But now we do need your approval in order for somebody in engineering to sign, sign the form and make it official and get it underway. Oh.
Chairman, I had two questions and and they have both been answered. When I visit with ASAP, what was the concern of who these uh young people belonging to, if you will? And and appears they belong to AmeriCorps. Uh, but we would have volunteer coverage, for example, for workers comp. Should one of them be injured uh if and and that became our issue. It'll most likely roll back up to AmeriCorps, I understand.
Right. And I I actually did ask if I could get that in writing from them because I was going to their website trying to see what I could find and I did. Did uh get that. They are self insured, but backed by the federal government for both liability of anything that that AmeriCorps might do or get hurt on their covered by that insurance.
So the other the other half of that was was what if they build a a structure, then that structure holds just enough water to break and then comes flooding? You know, it's the kind of thing that only uh lawyers sit around and think about in the middle of the night. Um, yeah. And and for that, I apologize. Um, but but should that eventually ever happen, uh, we would have coverage for that as well. Again, if that rolled back to the county, we we would likely not be the first uh in line. Um, and so so my concerns from the bureaucrat slash lawyer um concerns, I I think are answered. And so um this this as far as Green County goes is as close to free as you you likely get. And so uh I I don't see any any overt uh liability exposure to the county should we approve to to go forward in the process.
No, I just have a and I might have missed it because I couldn't really hear everything. But these ten to twelve youth adults are from the county, gonna be from the county or are they gonna come in from AmeriCorps?
They're coming from AmeriCorps and and will actually be their last, their la- in their last round. So they will already know each other, already have experience, already figured out how they're gonna do their meals, that kind of thing. And we've had some of that at our house before with Pretty Valley School at ten, twelve, I'm cooking in the kitchen. It's worked okay.
Well, I I just want to make a comment, say that I that it's an excellent program. Uh, I think there's a lot to gain from this and and very little to lose. Uh, so I I'm in favor of that.
I just had a quick question. And I know that that you presented this before and it's dear, dear to your heart, but I think it's great for you know, keeping that sediment out of the out of the river, river. I wish we could do that with salt seeder as well, but um I'm just curious that you mentioned it's no cost to the county. You mentioned you're gonna put them up at your place and how how do they get fed? I mean, is that part of the American?
They they bring the food too.
Bring it to.
I mean, it's it's remarkable what they do. And I've seen some of these these kids in action with Gila watershed group, and they really are are pretty impressive. I think that that really the profit out of this whole thing comes from the improvement of that group of kids.
I just wanted to confirm and make sure that you guys weren't being put out to have to try to feed these ten or twelve. You you know what I mean? And and we wanted to make that right.
Nope, just cot cot room.
No, that's okay.
I just, first of all, thank you for staying with this. Uh, yes, Gila watershed, I've seen what they do. Uh, so uh, young people that that do a lot of good. And and we all know if you've been out in the hills, especially around the Franklin and all where what they did, the C C C force.
Mm hmm.
And you go up those washes for decades. They did so much good and you know, now some of them, they filled up with sediment and stuff and you know, they they need maintenance, but it's amazing. Uh, what can be done with just a little ingenuity and and a little effort and and Jean, thank you for this effort. And I I for one know the good it does and I've seen the good that the C C C does.
Yeah.
And what they've done with the Gila watershed.
Yeah.
Partnership in doubt and on some of those projects. So with that, uh, let me see. Uh, yeah.
Well, I saw a move that we approved to submit a concept form to the AmeriCorps for ten to twelve youth adults in April twenty twenty four for three to four weeks to build rock dams in the Franklin Duncan watershed study area. That's true then.
Now second that.
We have a motion and and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Once again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm gonna take a point privilege. How how many years you been married, Jean, to Eric?
Sixteen, Saturday.
Well, congratulations. We really appreciate. Okay, uh, we'll now go to agenda item ten. Repair and Ms. Casinera.
There is much, of course, this time of year buzz and so forth going on with legislation that began to spin up for the uh beginning of legislative session in January. Um, bills are being prefiled. There there's been some uh, we we expect to see somewhat of a rut, prefiled bills, folders being opened. Um, and and both being open is simply a way of saying, hand, there's gonna be a bill I'm gonna file on on this subject matter. Uh, with the actual language hasn't been there yet. Um, we generally see an uptick in that between now and the end of the year because legislators want to get their foot in the door, especially if they can do it before the Is it is it George's? Well, that's interesting. It's radio on the cabinet?
Yeah.
Can we get in and turn it off? Okay. You know, there was a whole program about ghosts in these buildings. Just the radio.
He's gonna take credit for solving the the mystery.
Call the ghost ghost. Tell them we figured it out.
Solving the mystery.
Um, do that or is is Mr. Savant is channeling somebody, right? Well, with with that distraction, um, we are essentially in a in a situation where uh we will know a lot more about what members want to see happen in the next couple of weeks. Um, there will be a couple of themes that will, I think, dominate the legislative session, water being one of them. Uh, there's been a lot of off session work on water from the governor's office with WIFA. There's lots of activity going on there. The governors, um, and and chairman will know the name, but the governor's water commission, I forget what they call it, but they've been studying for a while. They've recently come out at the end of November with their recommendations of what should be done uh to address uh water policy in the state. So water will be an issue. Um, at water, yes, the governor's water council. The one of the things that we hope will be very busy and very active right at the beginning will be to address the election calendar. Um, if they address it, but they don't do it in a special session, then those laws won't take effect until ninety days after. If they address it, but they don't do it in a special session, then those laws won't take effect until 90 days after the legislative session, which last year went into August. And so, um, with special session, once that special session is closed, the 90 day clock starts. If they pass with emergency clause, then it starts immediately. But, but there have been teams of people who work in elections, working with the various people at the legislature. There is a small faction that wants to use this crisis to obtain some other election reform that, um, really kind of stemmed out of the last two elections, but, but what we really need is a technical fix to get our job done on time. Revenue is also something they will be watching. Uh, the next revenue projection will be out in January. It'll analyze, uh, revenues through half of the year, so through December. A lot of that depends on timing of, um, income tax that was delayed. So a lot of times you can file an extension, but those extensions generally go to October, the latest November. And so the department revenue generally sees an uptick in, in revenue at that timeframe. So that will be captured in the next report and we'll have a better idea whether the $400 million deficit will hold, will grow, or will shrink. Nobody I've talked to is very optimistic about it getting smaller, but it could well get larger. $400 million is something that can be managed within the, the budget. We heard from, uh, Representative J O B C just last week at our managers meeting. And, and 400 million, they, they can find those quarters in the couch. If it becomes a larger gap, then it becomes more of a concern. And the concern as well is that this is projected to last in the fiscal year 25. And even potentially in the fiscal year 27 before they expect it will start to get better. Some of the variables are, of course, like, whereas you've been hearing me say for a year and a half that a recession is on the horizon. There's a lot of people, particularly for Arizona, who are saying that probably not, that it'll be a slowdown, and we're seeing that already, but, but probably not a recession. And recession is a technical term that talks about negative GDP growth in two consecutive quarters. So even Ronald Reagan was once famous for saying that when your neighbor's out of work, it's a recession. When you're out of work, it's depression. And, and so recession is, is relative to your own thing. And with that, I'm going to share real quick. There we go. You asked us to, to keep track of and update you on our revenue picture. Of course, uh, we have other revenue streams, but our primary revenue stream, uh, is our shared sales tax and our county tax. This figure 408, 823, tried to highlight it. Apparently didn't work. There we go, 408, 823. It, it follows a trend line, although on the low side of it, that goes back pre-pandemic. In other words, this is not, uh, terribly out of line with revenues we saw prior to the pandemic. What you saw in the pandemic was this strange, both economic slowdown, and yet locally, we didn't see it. Copper, um, prices held, uh, worldwide. And there was likewise, we talked about for a lot of extra money in the M1 money supply. It's what led to the inflation that we were, we've experienced over the last year. And as you throw a bunch of money into an economy, people are going to spend it. And as you spend it, sales tax revenue in particular will track that spending trend. So that's buying more fast food, to buying more kitchen and dinette tables, to more cars, whatever it may be. Some segments of the economy, automobiles being one of those, because the demand was high with extra cash, but the supply was relatively low. Prices shot up, um, used cars. In fact, there were many people, I've heard many anecdotal stories, people bought a truck, two years later sold it for substantially more than they bought it with 20, 30,000 miles on it. And so, uh, those things lead to higher revenues, but we're, we're coming back to earth now. And so we're seeing, uh, and you'll, you'll recall that our policy, the tripwire starts at 400,000. And then, and so we, we're monitoring already. But, but our tripwire for beginning to take, uh, cost cutting measures starts at 400,000. On our half cent sales side, uh, again, uh, we see that we're in, in the trend line pre-pandemic. We saw the rise, uh, during the pandemic and, and we're coming back to the trend line. But it is lower than we've, than we experienced in the last few years. Again, and of this, this represents a smaller, uh, portion of our, our major revenue stream. But it's, it's certainly a canary in the mine shaft that we want to keep an eye on. This is, uh, the shared sales tax captures some of the, the retail activity in the valley. It's, it's a, our shares based on our assessed property value, but it captures sales activity statewide. This one, it captures sales activity that is local. This may be trucks and loaders that are sold at the mine. Uh, it also captures retail from, uh, everything we pay taxes on at the Circle K to, why your, your 99 cent soda costs you a dollar eight. Uh, it captures all of that activity as well. So we will continue to monitor it. I, I, I'm not ready to turn on the yellow flashing caution sign, but our, our, we're finding the switch, so we know where it's at. And we'll continue to monitor that. So with, with that, um, those are my reports on state, county budget, um, issues. And certainly would stand for any questions.
Another, another question, but a comment, it just amazes me that, that we equate, uh, $400 million at state level as quarters in the cushions. You know?
It's a $17 billion budget.
I know.
Yeah. There, there, there are figures like this that we refer to back in Washington DC sometimes as decimal dust. They blow it away.
We're going to be looking for dimes.
Right.
Anyway, thank you for that, that report. And, uh, next we'll turn time over to Ms. Castinier for the go over the calendar and events.
Thank you. I just noticed December is the last page. This week we have the ECO conference, um, starting tomorrow, going through the 15th. ECO and WIPA and small counties also tomorrow, CSA Board of Directors on the 14th, Thursday. And then we have the election security, the TTX, uh, that I have done for the 15th and the 16th. It's an election security that they've done for three years. And that's.
Whip, whip is on the, uh, 20, 20th.
Oh, it's on the 15th.
Yes, sorry about that.
Uh, offices are closed on the 35th for Christmas, and that's all I have for December.
So for December, just, we don't feel that will require another meeting later December.
We have not seen that, and, and certainly something could come up. And if so, we would, we would, uh, let you know, but at, at this point, we have not anticipated anything that needs to be addressed this month.
Okay, thank you.
Going into, um, January, Monday offices are closed, New Year's Day. Let me push that. Or no, we're still on the third or, or board meeting.
Oh, didn't we adopt that on the?
Oh, was it the fourth Thursday?
We moved it to the fourth. Because on January 3rd, um, we've got our election, people coming in, do, uh, I'm not sure what they do.
They're just.
Machine's work.
Yeah, they're updating, updating our, our machines on the 3rd.
So none of the 3rd, it's on the 4th.
For, and that's what.
That is on the calendar, okay.
And, and what their change on the?
And then we also changed from the 17th right into the 18th of Thursday.
But there is, that CSA Board of Directors again. 16.
It can go the other direction.
Or could we go the week?
Well, the following week on the 23rd?
Does anybody? Which would, would be your preference, equalize? Let me see, the 23rd. Do you have anything on the 23rd either one of you? Would that be better for staff?
It, it's always a little bit more helpful to have a day before or.
So let's go to the 23rd. That's important.
Make that change.
Yes, 23rd. I think we're Bianca, right? Is that what you said?
Thank you, thank you. So those meetings, January 4th and January 23rd.
My wife's birthday, go ahead and call me.
The 16th.
We want to suggest that we have one meeting a month, but you know, we can do it anytime. I'll have my wife call you also.
I make no suggestions anymore. The 12th County Managers Meeting, LPC meeting start begin on the 12th also. Small Counties, ECO and WIPA on the 17th, CSA on the 18th. That's all I have for January. Anybody have anything else to add? Going into February, the 6th, our board meeting. Um, and then NACO Conference, the Legislative Conference is the 10th through the 13th.
Super Bowl again.
Offices closed on the 19th, and then we will have our board meeting on the 20th. Counties, ECO, WIPA on the 21st and CSA on the 22nd.
Didn't we do something on the 21st of February? We move that to the 20th.
To the 20th, yeah.
For Richard.
Thank you. About time you did something. Yeah.
We, we will and send it updated to you.
Paybacks are heck.
And that's all I have for February.
And, and as soon as the session starts, uh, other than when we have a CSA Board Director, so we'll be an LPC on, on Fridays at nine, which all board members are welcome to. But the week we have a board, uh, CSA board meeting, you don't have LPC.
Okay, I will add that to the calendar also.
Thank you, Bianca, we appreciate what you do. Anyone else has anything to add to the calendar? Okay, thank you, and Derek and Bianca, you have anything else under?
I do not.
Okay, we'll now go to agenda item 11, consent agenda.
No, we approve the consent agenda, it's posted. I'll second that.
A motion, a second, is there any discussion hearing? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll now go to agenda item 12. Supervisory reports.
I don't have anything, I just want to make a comment to thank everyone for this, this year and all the employees that, all their hard work and everything and everything that's been done throughout the year. And, uh, I wish everyone a blessed and Merry Christmas.
Well, I, I don't have any reports for Merry Christmas to you all. You know, remember the reason for the season and, and we all enjoy a little time off and time with your families. Thank you, law enforcement, because I know that, uh, you guys don't get a whole lot of days off. We still need law enforcement, but you take time for your family and thank you for what you do. That's all I have.
I did with the sentiments and, and, uh, I also appreciate the staff. They're what makes this thing operate, uh, without them, you're only as good as your weakest staff member. And, and I think we, we've done well. Yes, we have our hiccups, but that's life. We live in an imperfect world and I've always said, why do we litigate, legislate? Uh, everything in perfection. We live in an imperfect world. We need to be more forgiving, more tolerant of each other. And I'm also thankful, uh, you know, this is, and I'm not ashamed of my beliefs, but this is the time that we, the good comes out because we try to emulate, uh, the, the God of this world and, and, uh, I'm thankful for my faith and knowledge in Him. With that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, uh, I don't have a report. And we'll go to agenda item 13, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.